It's 2020 at 7:00 PM. Called the roll and noticed that everybody is here. We're going to stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, and if you would like to stay standing with us, I'll say a quick invocation for us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Lord, we come before you tonight, and we start off by saying thank you, as always. We always thank you first for your grace, for your love, for your forgiveness, for loving us perfectly even though we're an imperfect people. Tonight, we want to say a special thanks to all the folks that came out, that, once again, we just, we always appreciate the show of support by our residents, our strategic partners, our staff, friends of the city, that all come here just with the love and the care of trying to make Shenandoah a better place for the residents and for all of those involved. We know that it gives time and effort, and especially, most especially, when it comes to our first responders. We know that they give each and every day more than we could ever ask them, and more than we could ever repay. So, we appreciate all of them here tonight, and we appreciate all the people here tonight that are here to honor them. We ask you just to bless them, put your hand of protection on them in the days ahead, and be with us and guide us as we make our way through this agenda tonight, and just impart your wisdom on us as best as you can so we can make the best decisions possible. Pray all these things in your son's name, and all God people said.
Amen.
Amen. Okay, well, once again, good evening, everybody. Thanks for coming. Exciting night. We don't normally get this big a crowd, so we don't know what to do with ourselves yet. We're going to move right into Item 5, which is Citizens Forum, and I don't believe, I don't see Courtney in the crowd, but I don't believe I had anybody signed up to speak, did I?
I don't believe so.
Anybody sign up to speak? Raise your hand if so. No? Okay. Well, y'all probably know well enough by now that if you missed this one, there's another one at the end of the meeting you can sign up to speak. We'd love to hear from you. So, with that, we will move into Item 6, which is Counsel Inquiry. Does anybody have anything right now that they would like to bring up? No? Okay. Well, we will wait till the end of the meeting then. That brings us to Item 7, which is kind of like my favorite item, secondary to MDD reports, which is usually a new employee, but this is, this is a promotion of employee. So, we're going to call discussion and possible action to appoint the Chief of Police.
I make a motion to appoint Troy Dunlap Chief of Police.
So, we have a motion by Ron Raymaker, and I believe Councilman Mike McLeod was the second. Do we have any discussion? Nope. I don't think this was a big surprise, so I think, I think Troy's been doing such an outstanding job over the last several months that this was a pretty easy one on the agenda. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to appoint Troy Dunlap as the Chief of Police in the City of Shenandoah, Texas, carries 5-0. Could I get John Chancellor by any chance to come up to the front for us here? We're going to ask John Chancellor to pin the Chief of Police badge on Troy.
Troy called me to do this. I'm very honored to do this, but one thing I want to tell you is that I don't have to live with him for the next 30 years, so I'm going to stand by him and ask his wife to come up here and actually do the pinning.
Oh, there you go. If I could get Council to step down in front, we're going to take a quick picture with new Chief of Police.
Okay, you're thinking, if I was to have that, then I'll sit. Would you like a chance for him to move in?
Yes, absolutely. One and a half.
Hey, can I get the whole department up here? Come on up. Come on up. Hold it up. Come on up. Everybody hold your breath. Yeah. Hold your breath.
Y'all are definitely going to have to totten up. All people in the back, short people in the front.
The face can have to move to the back of the room.
Okay, and people, they're coming a little tighter. Y'all are a big group. One, two, three. One, two, three. One, two, three. Now, let me turn the camera on.
Yeah. What? Yeah, he's got one that says interim. We're going to change it. Not yet. We're waiting for the vote.
We can take that.
I like to make sure.
Hey, we're going to take a real short, I don't know, like, two or three-minute recess.
Ms. Debbie, two or three minutes? Ms. Debbie, two or three minutes, probably?
Yeah.
Okay. Real short, two or three-minute recess, just so they can take some pictures, and then we'll, we'll be right back with the rest of the agenda. Okay, we're going to resume the regular meeting now, and Officer Dunlap will be, or Chief Dunlap, sorry, will be, will be in a few minutes. But we're going to move into Item 8, which is the presentation of a proclamation to declare September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, I'm going to read the present, the proclamation real quickly, and that is, "The City of Shenandoah Official Proclamation Designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, now therefore I, M. Richie Wheeler, Mayor of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. In witness hereof, I happen to set my hand and have caused the official steel of the City of Shenandoah, Texas, to be effect to this ninth day of September 2020." Can I get the, thank you. Can I get the Daughters of the American Revolution to come on up, and we'll take some pictures?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you all. Thanks for coming tonight, too. Okay, good stuff. Hope the rest of the agenda's as fun as the first two. We'll move into Item 9, which is discussion and possible action to set council meeting dates for November and December.
Counsel, this, it's that time of year again where we pick our, we have one meeting in November, one in December due to the holidays. What you see on your agenda report are the normally scheduled dates for the first meetings of those two months. That's usually the direction we go, but you have the option to pick another date.
Either way, approve the recommended dates of November 11th and December 9th for council meeting.
Second. I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher. I have a second by Councilman Gristy. Do we have any discussion? I don't know if it matters to anybody, November 11th is Veterans Day. I don't think that's a city holiday or anything of that nature, so it shouldn't affect anything, really, right? Okay. Just sort of bring that up. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to move the, set the council dates passes 5-0. Let's move to Item 10, which is discussion and possible action regarding future scheduled events.
Counsel, as Councilman Fletcher requested at the last meeting, we're just looking for a little direction on the remaining events for the calendar year, and you'll see those on your agenda report. We are carrying on with the garage sale and the trash bash as planned, so just want to know what council's preferences are for the remaining other events.
Has National Night Out been pared back at all?
So, with National...
Do we need to make a motion before we have discussion?
I think you can ask, I think he can ask about what's, yeah, it's a question to Troy.
I just didn't want to go back.
Yeah, no, it's a good call. Would we say Troy?
So, with National Night Out, what we're having problems with is there's a lot of people that can't participate, Woodlands, Fire, and some of the Montgomery County stuff, they can't come to the event, so it's going to have to scale back quite a bit.
I might add also, in light of the governor's renewal of Governor Abbott's COVID-19 restrictions, we cannot have gatherings of more than 100 people even outside unless there's mask and social distancing enforced.
I think mask or social distancing, right? If they can't be, if they can't social distance six feet, they have to wear masks.
Correct.
Do we need to, we can have a discussion now, or do we need to make some sort of...
Somebody probably needs to make a motion, I would think.
I'll make a motion to, we cancel National Night Out, continue to have Halloween Safe Streets and table lighting of the angels and Workday until later, although we can...
So, I have a motion by Councilman McLeod to cancel National Night Out, to have Halloween Safe Streets as planned, and to table lighting of the angels and luminary Workday. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Just talking.
No.
I have a second by the Mayor Proctor. Who wants to go first?
I have a question with regards to Halloween Safe Streets. I mean, I just don't see logistically how we're going to pull that, pull that off. It's gotten so big. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, didn't we go through a phase at one point where we handed out, like, chits or something, and we did the whole, you know, you could have, you know, it seemed like we did something like that.
I wasn't here at that time, but that's, I've been told that.
It was when it was privately funded.
Okay. I just, I mean, I'm wondering if, you know, referring back to something like that would make sense, because this thing has gotten so large that we may need to implement some sort of restriction of that type in order to try to keep that thing under control, because it's...
Chris, could you, how difficult would it be to pull up the map for what we're going to do Halloween Safe Streets, just as a reference point?
Come on.
While we're talking. I don't disagree. I mean, logistics with Halloween Safe Streets is always the biggest factor anyway.
My thought on National Night Out is it's all about mingling, hanging out together. It's one of the things that we know about. Basically, a lot of the activities, you know, schools or whatever, the activities is about mingling and close contact, and my hope would be with Halloween Safe Streets, it's, it's a constant movement. I know in late, in, it has been, you know, you have these clusters, but those clusters tend to be already, people who are already in close contact.
Let's do this. Let's bite these off one at a time. Let's, let's talk about National, let's talk about National Night Out first. While I am keenly aware of the fact that, number one, we have limited partners that want to be involved, huge point. Number two, we wouldn't want the majority of our PD in one spot all being exposed to the same illness, another big point. However, is there something, and I realize that, to borrow a line from Apollo 13, the world's getting awfully big in the window, is there, is there some other creative idea that we could come up with where we don't have to necessarily scrap it? Listen, I'm talking all the way as far as maybe we do something virtual, which I don't really want to do, but I'm just saying we could, you know, something, maybe we do something on a more limited scale where it's just our PD and our residents, and it's limited PD. I'm just asking questions at this point.
Drive-by.
Is there, is there something, yeah, could we do, could we, could we do like a parade, a patrol parade or something, or, I don't know, I mean, just something where we don't necessarily have to scrap it, but we still be smart about it.
Right. So, as far as the virtual thing, of course, we haven't planned or prepared for anything like that. I see a lot of issues with that, because you're limited as far as space and what you can show and everything like that. As far as a drive-by, of course, you know, that's something we can consider, but it would just be the Shenandoah Police Department, probably, maybe with Oak Ridge or somebody like that. But as far as...
I'm okay with, by the way, if it's just the Shenandoah Police Department we're talking about.
Yeah.
I'm not necessarily, I don't think we have to involve every other agency in the area. I just think it'd be nice if we could come up with something creative that worked, that made sense, that still highlighted our police department in front of our residents. I don't know what that is.
We can brainstorm for a couple of things and look at it, and then we can present it. We're about, we're about three weeks away. Yeah. As my other...
Close, come on, yeah.
Seeing as it's a PD thing, they should...
Oh, yeah. I agree with that 100%.
And I think also that, I mean, I'm, a big part of this is gathering our citizens together. And as we were in Civic Club last night, that was one of the things that was discussed, how people felt about that type of gathering. And everybody was 100% for it.
Everybody was 100% for having National Night Out?
Having National Night Out, yeah.
Interesting.
They all felt that it's time, just as it was July 4th, we've moved down the road, there's a lot more things that we know about the whole COVID-19 thing. I won't get on my soapbox tonight, but there's a lot more to it. So anyways, that's really what this night is about, is gathering our community with our police department, even if the partners can't come, and really having that opportunity to, to come out and enjoy and engage with, with our officers. That being said, whether we look at National Night Out, and I know we're not going to talk specific right now about the other events, but I think first and foremost, we have to be prudent in protecting our police department, because the last thing that we want is to be six officers down, or 12 officers down, or 18 officers down, because it's not like we can bring in another agency that's going to provide the policing services for our residents.
Yeah, agreed.
So, I know Troy and I had this conversation earlier in respect to that, and while I am all for every event, because I'm a big believer that if you can walk into Walmart, Sam's Club, or Home Depot, by God, you can go to any event that's on the face of the earth, because if you think that there's sanitizing shopping carts, you're out of your flipping mode. So, yeah, you, we can come out and engage and safely be adults about taking responsibility that if we're not feeling well, that we stay home, or if we're uncomfortable about it, stay home. I don't think you're going to hurt people's feelings by being out there. Mask or no mask, we don't need to go down that road, but, you know, my personal feeling is that, again, I think the police department really needs to decide and let us know what their comfort level is across the board, but as much as I would like to have the events, again, I think we have to be very prudent about protecting our staff, protecting our officers, number one, and then even as we look at other events, and to be honest, I don't, I don't think there's a difference between National Night Out and, and Halloween Safe Streets, or any other event that we have as a city, everybody's going to congregate together. It's just what happens when our neighbors get together, they hug on one another, they talk with one another, that, that's what, what our citizens, citizens do. So, I think first and foremost, that's what we have to look at, is, is protecting not just our department, but our, our staff as a whole as well.
I just have to ask, Chief, then, what, what's your staff's level of comfort, then?
As far as, all of them collectively?
National Night, let's stick to that one.
National Night Out, it's, it's, the crowds are a little smaller with National Night Out. They don't pose as, as much problem. What you're looking at is, you're looking at probability, so you're looking at odds. So, the more people, the bigger the event, the more increased odds are that we're going to be exposed to something. So, National Night Out is a little smaller event, there's not as many people that come to it. Halloween Safe Streets is a larger event, you know, we've been getting up to worse, thousands of people coming to that event, so that has a larger probability of exposure to the officers. And those two events there, they have, those are all hands on deck, so all officers have to be there, both of those events. So, the probability of the exposure is a lot higher.
Thanks.
Anybody else got any thoughts on National Night Out, before we move to Safe Streets? Anybody else got any thoughts on National Night Out before we move to Safe Streets? So Safe Streets, I'm not as worried about the residents. Most of them are gonna be wearing masks, right? Because they're wearing a costume. I mean, is what it is. And a lot of them are gonna be, the little ones about this tall that it seems like, you know, that the virus just passes right through like water. So, and again, like Councilman Fletcher said, people can be smart and be safe and take responsibility for themselves. I think what we have to ask ourselves there again, just like what Chief said was, is, you know, how can we do it and not put our police department at risk? So again, that might be one that whether we want to have it or not, we ask the police department for some direction as to how to have it if we're gonna have it, you know, how can we have it where?
It's kind of picking up on where Dean was, where like, could we like give out lanyards to citizens from the City Hall, get a lanyard?
It's a publicly funded event, you can. It's a publicly funded event, you can't.
I'm just asking, yeah.
Well, I mean, that's the answer, that's a publicly funded event.
Bill?
Yeah, I'm curious, is that, I mean?
I'm not saying, but it's publicly funded by residents of the city of Shenandoah. So I'm not, it's not like we're taking federal tax dollars, you know, funds or anything.
I'll defer to the realtor.
And I guess, and I guess everybody, everybody who wanted one could come and get a lanyard.
Sure. I just, I remember when we did that, I didn't know it was privately funded or whether, you know, I didn't know what the difference was. But I remember when we did that and it restricted you to, oh, you know, there's, there's some friends that we want to take with us.
Where'd our map go? You took our map away at the most important part. The other one with, that was highlighted. Yeah, there you go. Because I think maybe part of the discussion is, is that, is that route too big and unmanageable for the police department? If we pared it down, would that help?
Well, the reason why we have those, we chose those streets, one, due to parking, because of the mass amount of people that come to the event. As y'all know, the events continue to grow. Last year, we had a huge traffic infestation and a big problem with that. So because of that, we chose this location to access the parking lot at the swimming pool. However, if we condense it down, that's gonna cause more congestion. There's gonna be more people per street.
So Bill, what's, what's, I mean, it's not like, so the park, the reason the park is public and has to be open to the public is because my understanding was we got some state and federal dollars in the years, which basically created that situation.
Correct, yes.
That's not gonna be the situation for Halloween Safe Streets.
No, I think the distinction is if you make something available, the best example is the city is unable to give a scholarship to a student because we're picking one person and giving them a special benefit. As long as that benefit is equally available to every citizen, then it's okay.
Of Shenandoah.
Of Shenandoah. Yeah, correct.
And I think that's kind of my point was, if we, if we could restrict it to residents.
Okay, now let's, now let's think about the logistics of trying to pull that off inside of a month.
I think that can happen, but at the same time, I think you're gonna create more issues with the police department.
Yeah, because people are gonna show up anyway.
Because people are gonna show up anyways and then now they have to engage in turning them away. It's not gonna be a staff member that's gonna turn away, you know? So now, now we're policing, we're kind of defeating.
Counsel man the exit points.
I don't have any issue with that.
Yeah.
I don't, I think that, that the other side of that too is that while this year that may be great, obviously, I don't think that's the picture long-term. We want to pay for our city by any means. The second part of that is that, you know, there may be another way to pull it off with limiting officers' involvement or exposure. And I'm not just throwing this out there, I actually talked with staff prior to this, knowing this was coming up tonight, and I wasn't gonna throw Joseph under the bus and say, hey, let's have Public Works do it, if that's not something that they could be prepared to do. Not, not that I, I want Public Works to take on the risk of the virus over our police department by any means, but I think we have to be prudent with all staff because if Public Works goes out, I don't think the police department wants to go over and, you know, run the sewage plant by any means. Although it may be a little bit more easier to get somebody, somebody in to temporarily pull that shift, right? Where we wouldn't be able to do that with our police department. But that is something based on how the map's set up and if police were to do traffic control and Public Works were to be more involved in distribution and being more involved on the street. That's not our atypical, but that is an option that can be considered if that's the direction everybody decided to go. I'm all for having the events, all of them. I think it's something that, you know, our citizens need. But at the same time, like I say, I wouldn't bring that up if I didn't have the discussion previous that this is something that they would consider to do.
So to be clear for the record, Joseph said that Public Works would be willing to pitch in and?
He's right there.
I just looked, I just scanned the crowd. I was like, Joseph's not here tonight. I looked right past you.
Yes, Public Works staff would be happy to step in wherever we could help if they can provide a solution.
Obviously, we just have to defer man hours out of the police department over to Public Works. And I mean, it's logistically more of a county issue than it is anything else at that point.
I'd just like to put out that we're not talking about canceling Halloween, we're just talking about the police department that provides safe streets.
Yeah, people can still go door to door.
Correct. Halloween would still, Halloween Safe Streets would continue.
I just want to make that point.
Like it normally would. The difference would be how it's handled internally.
Well, so is it, is it everybody's general thought that we should do Halloween Safe Streets? Maybe we look at Dean's idea, I don't know, Bill, and how we, how we might go about restricting that? I mean, we do, we restricted it to Trash Bash, right?
Well, that's a little bit different. You have two driveways coming in.
You don't have carloads of kids going on.
I was gonna say, you're gonna check driver's licenses at one point.
Do we say you can't do Halloween Safe Streets because you don't have a lanyard on?
Turn away some five-year-old kids.
You're a resident that, you know, didn't know that I had to go get a lan, I mean, and then who's gonna police that? I mean, based on, you know, access points, there's several to come in. I mean, there's not just one way in.
So that's part of the reason why we chose this location as well, is due to the access points and the ease of which we can control the accesses. With this setup, we could limit the amount of officers that we bring in to this because we have the block off on Thornwood and Driftwood, and then the other one would be Cedarwood and Maplewood are awful women. So that would, that would make an easier, it would make it easier for us to traffic control versus what we've had in the past, and also utilizing the parking lot as well. So we can limit the amount of officers that we have so that a way, do you get exposed?
What are your thoughts on Councilman Fletcher and Joseph's idea of maybe even splitting that down from, you know, already a limited officer presence, but then split that even further with using Public Works?
I definitely appreciate Joseph on that, but, you know, I would definitely hate to, to have to utilize him and his guys, but, you know, if he wants to work with me, we can get together and work, work together on this. However, it is right around the corner, so we gotta.
I'm just thinking from a distribution standpoint, because usually the police distribute all the candy through the neighborhoods and that's something that Public Works could possibly do.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that's the real problem though, is it? The distribution of candy is not the issue.
The distribution of the candy is not that big of a deal. The main problem is just all officers being there, the amount of congestion with the amount of people that we have and being exposed to.
Do we have any riot gear with those face shields that we could?
No, we, no, we don't. That'll be on the next agenda, by the way. So.
Have everybody stand on the corner with shields. Okay, so I think, I think the long and the short of this one is that for Halloween Safe Streets, we're looking for maybe a little further direction from Troy after he visits with Joseph and maybe kind of same deal, maybe a little more concrete than National Night Out, but, but still, we need some direction. Does that sound about what everybody's summing up?
I would say that we probably would, well, it's back to Councilman McLeod's motion.
Right. Well, so far, the motion is scrap National Night Out and keep Halloween Safe Streets as it is. I'm just listening to, and then table lighting the angels, which we'll move into our next one, which I'm adamantly opposed to, by the way. Number one, I can't imagine by 12/1 that we have to worry near as much by December 1st as what we supposedly do today, and we certainly didn't need to, you know?
Well, the election will be over, so.
Yeah, exactly. November 4th, we, anyway.
If I might, just for the, just for the record also, you know, my point about, you know, being able to provide chips or whatever, one of the, one of the reasons I, you know, not just COVID and all that, but I think that the Safe Streets has lost its personality. It's not a community event anymore. It is people from all, of all around us who have converged on our city. The last, last year, I maybe saw one or two of my neighbors, and that's not been what Safe Streets has been about in the past. Because there were so many people on the streets that I think it's just lost its personality. It's not a community event any longer. It is a, all people from all around and.
And that's something I wanted to point out. I want to ask Troy and staff to take a look at, who else has canceled their events? Because if we're the only game in town?
We're gonna get more people.
We're gonna get even more people than we usually do.
Exactly.
So just, yeah, I know what you mean.
And I hate to look at it from that perspective too, because.
Well, it's just handling the bodies.
I understand that. But I hate comparing us to any other city because we're not.
Well, and I don't want to shut our doors to anybody else either. You never know, you never know when somebody might come here and experience an event at Shenandoah and go, wow, I love, I'd really like to move to that place. Or I'd like to open my next business there, you know? You know, we, most of y'all know we had an issue at the park very recently where people who didn't live here were being told that they couldn't use the park. And I hate that because the person that emailed me and was telling me about the situation was a, was an extremely polite person, extremely complimentary of the city. And you could just tell they were really enjoying their time here up until the incident. And I just, you know, kept thinking to myself, that's probably somebody who at one point, if they were looking for a new house, might think, wow, you know what, I'd really like to go look in Shenandoah. That's a neat place. I might want to live there. And, you know, you don't want to, you don't want to turn people like that off from our city, especially, you know, again, people might be wanting to open businesses here. So I hate to close the doors, but I do get it from a, from a, just a simple head count perspective. It's just, it's a lot of people to keep up with.
But, you know, I'm just obviously a huge fan of Halloween Safe Streets. That was one of the things. Halloween Safe Streets, Light of the Angels, Easter egg.
Those are, those are huge detractors to the city. But, but like I said, when, when it's no longer feels like a community event, when it feels like, you know, we've just diverted the highway off through the neighborhood and put them back out on the street, that's a different experience.
And there's another, you know, there's, there's some other ideas. We could have a, basically through the same streets, you know, some sort of Halloween-type parade that might minimize that. I mean, there's some other things that, that might be out there that, that could happen as well, you know, that could maintain this, a little bit of community feel. It's still gonna end up gathering people in a, in a static way, and that's, that's the issue. People in motion are not, are not really the big issue. I mean, this is why you can go to Walmart and you can walk around and it's not a big deal. But it's, it's the hanging out together, it's being in each other's face for an hour at a time. So again, I.
So we need to change the motion?
What if we, no, we're not, I mean, we've, we've.
We're lighting the angels.
We're just gonna talk about everything first.
So I would say in, in hearing what Chief and Joseph have talked about, I would say let them kind of work through the details on Halloween Safe Streets. I don't think we're gonna defer people from coming to Halloween Safe Streets and do it in a safe manner with, with our staff. I, I, I don't. And I think that honestly, Halloween is probably gonna be huge this year, just because everybody's been cooped up for so long, not being able to go and do anything. And this is really kind of the first event that the kiddos are able to get out and do stuff. So I think unfortunately, you know, we have to either look at accepting thousands of people into our neighborhoods or canceling all of that. I don't think there's an in-between.
Yeah, and that's probably the true, true for, for this year. And we can, we can do it and do it safely.
So I do wonder if we didn't give out free candy, this is just, I'm just throwing this against the wall. If we didn't give out free candy, would that limit, if we kind of broadcast that we're not giving out free candy this year, but we're still gonna block the streets off? So you can still, you know, trick or treat like normal, you know, just like we're good, like all of us did when we were eight years old. The difference is, is we're just not gonna allow vehicles to drive through the streets, if that maybe.
I think the only thing you're doing is shifting the burden to the homeowner that lives in those streets and not the whole city. Because if you're limited just to the, those streets, then you're basically saying, these are our safe streets, go get your candy from all these neighbors. And then everybody else that's not on those neighbors really doesn't have a contribution.
Okay, so just, again, devil's advocate, what if we open it up a little bit more, we block off a larger number of streets? Is that even possible? I mean?
Spread it out a little bit.
Spread it out a little bit? I mean, I'm just throwing ideas out there to stir the conversation.
Then, you know, you run into additional issues. The more, the more you expand it, the more issues you have to have, the more officers you have to bring in because you have more additional streets you have to block off. So that, that just creates, you know, more, more problems. I think this is a large enough area to manage where it's at. It's spread out enough that I think it could handle the amount of people coming in. However, you know, going forward in the future, for possibly next year, if COVID is still around, we can consider some other options ahead of time so that a way we can pre-plan for, for that. Because that's what it's all about. It's all about the pre-planning.
Absolutely.
Can I throw out, we've also got in, in your route there this year, which is, we sort of half talked about it last time we had this route, we've got that giant park that we could utilize to move people through and about.
I think that'll happen naturally based on the route.
It will, but we can actually encourage that.
Yeah, put something up there.
Maybe we get, some of us who don't live on this route, get some pop-ups maybe. I'm just, again, I'm same thing, I'm just kind of brainstorming to get some pop-ups to kind of encourage.
Yeah, pull them out into the.
Pull them out into the, so again, you can, without blocking off more streets, creating more space, more environment, so we could kind of have some pop-ups that they can kind of move, you know, go through the park and.
Have some people there distributing candy there.
Towards, towards that area. And again, that would be some of the us who live on streets that probably will, will never have safe streets again. But, and, and right, some people who, who have never had it and who will, you know, that would give them an opportunity to participate in a way that they probably wouldn't, wouldn't otherwise be able to. So I'm gonna throw that out there, particularly for this year. That will help, without opening new streets, that would help thin the crowds.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Good idea. And you could even use the pool parking lot or pool area a little bit for that too. Lighting of the Angels, I'm, you know, again, I'm, I'm 100%. I feel we need to have it. I think we need to just full speed ahead. In fact, I think it needs to be the biggest and best lighting of the angels we've ever had, if you want to know the truth of it. I feel like not having it, not saying you were doing this, but I'm just saying that in general, that this attack on our culture is more than just about, it's, it's, I'm gonna, I'm not getting on my soapbox here, but there is, there is.
It's okay. I think you're in good company.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's quite literally an attack on our culture right now because if they can, if they can, you know, separate us from that which we hold dear, then it makes it easier to establish whatever it is that they want. And I think this is one of those types of events, you know, lighting of the angels, I think, is important to us just as a community, as a, as a country. These types of events are important to continue to, to make sure. are important to continue to, to make sure that we, that we push forward. So I would be all in favor of this one being the biggest and best ever.
Agreed. All right, I'm gonna amend my motion to approve to have National Night Out be at our Chief of Police discretion, Halloween Safe Streets to move forward with some modifications, and Lighting of the Angels to go forward as well. And Luminary Workday to be at staff discretion.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman McLeod to leave National Night Out at, as the Chief of Police's discretion, Halloween Safe Streets to move forward with some modification based on Chief and Joseph's direction, Lighting of the Angels to move forward, and Luminary to, Luminary Workday to be at staff direction. At staff, does that, does that sum it up?
That's it.
And I had a second by Councilman Ramaker. Do we have any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. I think that was a good job. There was a lot of talk on one item, but I thought it was important one, so good job, guys. Okay, item 11, discussion and possible action regarding the investment policy.
Motion to approve the investment policy.
I have a motion by Councilman Ramaker to approve. I have a second by Councilman Grisby. Do we have any discussion?
I tweaked it a lot last year, so I got nothing else to tweak this.
Well done. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Item 12, discussion and possible action regarding new tree plantings.
Mayor and Council, this is an item is regarding planting additional trees at the main park off of Maplewood and also off of the Greenbelt area between Sunning Dell and Wellman Manor. There were some trees that were planted there at the park by Classic that have not survived. They're out of warranty period, and so this project is to replace those trees that have died. And also to add four additional trees in, in the center of the park to add some more vegetation there, flanking the, the trails. It's kind of an almond shape there in the center. We've got four on one side, these four will be planted to basically match on the opposite side so that they'll, they'll work together. This is funded out of the tree fund, which is what developers pay into if they're unable to meet their canopy requirements on their own developments. This is coming to you because it's over $15,000 and it was not specifically budgeted.
I move the way through the tree plantings.
Second.
So I have a motion by Councilman Fletcher with a second by Mayor Pro Temp. Do we have any discussion?
Yeah, Scout's been noticing the lack of trees over by Sunning Dell.
I'm just curious, could we find a common theme as to why these trees were dying? Is it lack of water? Do we need more irrigation? Do we have some sort of a infest, infestation problem that we need to spray for? Do we have any idea?
So I, I talked to a, a tree arborist who's actually been out there and, and done some treatments on the trees, and, and basically his explanation is, you know, some of the trees just don't make it when you pull them from, you know, all these have come from a nursery, you know, and he compares it to, they're, they're like little babies, they get everything they want, and then you slap them in the cruel hard, hard world, and some just don't make it.
Yeah. Hopefully all the babies do though.
Yes.
Do all these come from Texas nurseries?
What's that?
It said, do all these plantings come from Texas nurseries?
Yes.
Red oak is a native tree to this area, so they should, I mean, that's probably your best chance of survival, that and a post oak, but.
Right, they're, they're all deciduous native to this area.
Is, is, does this utilize all the funds that are available in the tree fund at this point?
Most of them, there's going to be a few thousand remaining, which was, I believe, Council's goal to put trees in the ground rather than keep them.
Absolutely.
That's the purpose of it.
No reason to have a big tree fund in the trees.
Okay, yeah, that's right. All right, we had a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0 to plant our new trees. Thank you, Joseph.
You're welcome.
Item 13, and we'll break these up into two, discussion and possible action, adopt the following resolutions needed for the Texas Water Development Board loan application. We'll start off with A, application filing and authorized representative resolution, the resolution by the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas requesting financial participation from the Texas Water Development Board, authorizing the filing of an application for financial participation and making certain findings in connection therewith.
So moved.
Think I have a motion by Councilman Ramaker with a second by Councilman Brot. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0 to file the application. And then item B, which is application resolution, certificate of secretary resolution by the City Council of the City of Shenandoah, Texas requesting financial participation from the Texas Water Development Board, authorizing the filing of an application for financial participation and making certain findings in connection therewith. Do you have a motion?
I have a motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Grisby with a second by Councilman McLeod. Do we have any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Brings us to item 14, which is discussion regarding a project ranking process.
Council, Councilman Ramaker has brought this to you for discussion to look at refining the ranking process of our major capital projects, and I'll let him tell you about his idea.
Chris, can you put the rankings up?
All right, so I asked staff then to rank everything. As you can see, everything stayed in the same order that they previously done. You can see the priority correlates to what we've seen before on the highs, the mediums, and the lows. You can see the ones that are called high two, those would have been priority twos that were listed high. And the reason I wanted them to rank them was, for instance, of the, you know, of the four water lines, you know, could you just prioritize them and say which one has to be done before another one would have to be done? If you had to cut one out, for instance, what would you do? And so we use the same methodology in my line of work every day. I've got a lot of requests, I gotta prioritize what we want to do first. So I depend on staff to come up with them, you know, certainly we can, we can tweak them later on, but this, this one was pretty well set for this year anyway. But the reason I really wanted to go into this is, you know, it's a lot to do with projects that we're handing over to the MDD. Right now, we've got about $35 million worth of projects that are not water in the CIP plan. And so what I'm trying to propose is that we take a look at changing our approach because this lets us modify our project portfolio better, so we can adjust to change in real time. It's changing circumstances like a commissioner that doesn't fund a project that we thought maybe he was gonna, that he was gonna fund. So staff has ranked these projects based on current needs and risk mitigation, and they'll be updating them over time. So situations change, they can change the ranking. Secondarily, I guess I'd like to see that the MDD budget be completed before the council budget workshops in the future.
That, that was gonna be a council inquiry.
Too, too many years we've walked out wondering what is, what will they approve? What can they approve? With the CIP, everybody knows what the projects are. So let's find out before we go and decide on the ultimate budget, what ones MDD can actually, you know, fund for us. So ultimately, we'll make it easier for staff, council, and MDD. I'm kind of thinking we should probably send fewer projects to MDD, but perhaps ask for more down.
Those.
On those. I know a lot of pride went into coming up with the 70/30 format that we used, and it was tremendously better methodology than the previous one, which was no methodology at all. So, but processes have to change over time, and so this is our chance to improve our process, and we have. We have a CIP now. We have a priority on what these projects should be and when they should be done. And lastly, we can always adjust these if we, if we need to. So this is not written in stone if we got to a portion of the year and we needed to change something, but I think if we're engaged all the way along, that we can continue ranking these.
So, is your thought to rank all projects?
Well, I was just about to say, the only thing, the only thing, I, I love, by the way, I love it. My, now my third favorite.
But.
But, just some ideas, I'm, I'm going where Councilman McLeod was about to go, and can we put everything on there so, just so we can keep it all earmarked, even if it's all low, at least we know that it's on there, we sort of know what we talked about, because things may shift up and down over time, right?
Absolutely, yeah.
So I wouldn't be opposed to loading the list, so to speak, with, with even more. And then the other thing, just from a snapshot perspective, I'd love to be able to see what MDD eligible amount is, and then what that would bring general fund expenditure, like another column that would show what that leaves as general fund dollars.
Yeah.
Or what, just so, you know, again, so real quick.
Typically, typically, we have a tool that we work with and that, that we would be using it here because everybody would kill me as far as staff is concerned, but if you were to have this in a spreadsheet and I were to have the totals line, you can just cut and paste rows above and below the line.
Right.
And, and play what-if scenarios with the actual budget amount that you have available. And certainly you can do this for all projects. This was cap projects, this was handy and things that were already considering being sent over to MDD or were sent to MDD. But certainly we can limit what we send over in the future.
Well, and, and I do kind of like your idea, it may, make everybody's life a little easier to just make sort of larger requests. One thought is because of the funding, we may want to have a, a water sewer priority versus a general fund priority. I didn't know what the, what the thought was. I know the title of this says MDD eligible projects, but really, we have sort of the whole CIP.
We do, yeah.
And we've got stuff that's, that's paid for under water sewer, stuff that's paid for under general fund.
In this case, it's juxtaposed, the water and sewer that's existing in here.
Right.
I'm anticipating there's probably going to be water and sewer projects on there in the future, but we'll rate them in terms of.
So this is a list of stuff that we might send to MDD for a request? Is that what your, is that what the, the purpose of this would be?
Yeah, we might, we might send like the top five, top six, whatever, whatever we think might consume a potential budget for them.
Okay. Because I think this is actually.
They're not obligated to spend anything.
Obviously not.
So.
But is the purpose of this ranking project is to send to MDD, or is it just ranking projects in general for us to keep, keep track of?
I think both.
Okay.
You know, the ones that are MDD eligible, we want to have those ranked, and, you know, certainly, you know, as we're going into budget workshop, I, I always would like to know, which of these is really more important?
Well, my.
The skid loader at the top of the list?
But that's my point of the pool and the park.
Whose priority is it?
Right.
Is this MDD's priority or staff's priority?
But, but a water sewer project is going to be funded out of water sewer and a general fund, because it could be, you know, the Questico software, maybe every department wants that, and that's, that's their dream and everybody loves it. Or it could just be, where's Lisa? It could just be Lisa's baby, and Joseph hates the idea, and so overall in the staff, it's kind of a half and half, but Joseph wants that skid loader, thinks it's a pretty, pretty important thing, right?
I want to skid load it.
Well, it's true, but it's number 16 on the priority.
So, so that's, that was my thought, is, is if, if it's by, by funding, you know, when we come, come down to it, if it's by funding source, I love the idea of telling them, okay, we're gonna do ACP lines, but which one of these really need to get done?
Mm-hmm. Exactly, Mike, I think the motor, the motor control center.
I think the motor control center is like a pretty important thing, so.
That's just my opinion.
You know, and then is he use this as a tool? Again, you get to play what-if, what if I took that one ACP line and I just put in, raise the priority of the motor control unit, so.
But I think the key with this is that staff's determining what.
Absolutely.
Needs to be done.
Do we need to dig deeper than just three tiers, low, modern, high? Do we need to, do we need to rank them on a scale of one to 10?
Yeah, we are ranking, the idea is to rank them on that one through 18 is the aim here. That's the goal.
Because, because we get the list.
Okay, so, so not all highs are created equal, so the number of ACP water line at Memorial Hermann is higher than the David Memorial.
Yeah, so while, while the priority came from the original sheet, and I think that's one of the first time I ever saw that, so thanks Cathy for doing that, was take it one more step farther and just, if I had to do ACP Memorial or ACP Crossing Research, which one would you do first? I have no other money to do the other one, which is the higher priority.
Gotcha.
But basically, this is a list to present to MDD for funding, because they haven't voted on any of it.
Ultimately, yeah, and that, part of this would be to help rank it so that they can settle on what ones they are going to fund before we go to budget.
Well, let's say it's also a list for.
I think it's also a list for council.
Absolutely, absolutely.
In a lot of cases, in, in every case, let's not, let's not lose sight of the fact that in every case, it has to be a project that council wants to do.
Yes.
And then MDD reimburses council the money. So it, that, that is correct, right? If MDD can't do a project council doesn't want to do. So, so I think this is equally important, if not more important for council. Sure, again, I love it, thank you.
So this, just tonight, just to kind of socialize it and we can bring it back and tweak with it some more.
It's gonna be a living, breathing thing, I mean, as you move forward with it.
Yeah.
As we take the stuff off the top, stuff trickles up.
Yep, absolutely.
And I think it's critically important that MDD sets their budget before we.
Agreed, absolutely. That's a frustration.
Yes.
That way it's done and we know.
It's like we leave and it's like, will the wishing well happen?
Right.
So that's all.
Is there not a set date?
Do we need to make an, can we put that on the agenda for, do we have to modify the MDD to make that happen?
I think we need.
Let me look at it, I don't.
When they should be done. Yeah, I think there should be a date set, maybe under July.
I think that we can do that one of two or three ways. I think we could do it simply by resolution, taking, assuming that MDD would follow our resolution, or certainly we could amend the bylaws to require it.
And we actually kind of accomplished some of that through joint session this year.
Yeah.
So I think maybe one of the ways we could do it is just plan joint session earlier in the process, maybe in May, rather than in, I don't remember when we did it this year, July.
A month later.
Yeah, I'm thinking if we could have MDD done by.
Well, if you might want to do June, the only problem with May is that's, you know, you got typically an election, so you may have somebody coming in or going out.
Well, you wouldn't, well, yeah, you wouldn't necessarily an MDD.
Not necessarily MDD. Okay, I like it.
So, just for clarification for staff, sorry, are we just looking for the, the projects that we proposed this budget year, or do you want to do it per the whole CIP plan, which is about five years?
I would say the whole plan, yeah.
The whole plan, okay.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I know that's, I think once we create it that first time, it won't be as much work.
Yeah, just making sure.
I'm gonna apologize ahead of time.
No, just so that we get it on right one.
It's not like that by the next meeting.
Right, yeah, yeah.
In the spring, yeah.
And this, this serves as roughly a summary of what, what's on CIP plan already.
Right. What we're doing is putting it in one list, and as you have a new project, to figure out where it slides in that, in that list. If somebody walks up with $100 million and says you have to spend it, we just start at the top and spin down.
It'd be nice if we could make this sort of a living document that maybe stays on the website somewhere that's easily accessible, you know?
I think that would be, I mean, it, it makes a lot of sense. It's already, it's already set up for that type of format, you know, I mean, and like Mike said, as, as things fall off and things roll up and roll down, you know, I mean, we can, we can definitely.
Yeah, agreed.
It's nice to be able to see it.
Okay, are we done with 14?
Yep.
As usual, good job, Ron.
Nice job.
And staff. We'll move to item, and Councilman Fletcher, who's also on MDD and gives input.
We'll move to item, and Councilman Fletcher, who's also on MDD and gives input. We'll move to item 15, which is Citizens Forum. And again, we didn't have anybody sign up to speak unless somebody would like to. So then we will move into item 16, which is City Administrator Updates.
Counsel, I've got a few quick ones. Just as you all are probably aware, we had the recycling truck fire the other day, and all of that debris has been cleaned up from where it was dumped on the street to put out the fire. So that's all taken care of. We've also had a lot of displaced people in our hotels from Louisiana. They were impacted by the hurricane. And while our hotels are glad to have the occupancy, we've also had some police calls there. So the police department is monitoring that activity, and, you know, there have been a few, some calls and some arrests. So that's... They're keeping that under control. And just one last thing, reminder that TML virtual registration is now open if any of you are interested. We've had one or two interested, so let us know if you want to participate, and we'll sign you up. That's it.
Is there any way that, like, you know, if I'm registered, that I can invite other people to sit in the room with me and watch this action?
I'm sure you can.
I'll have you social distance and wear masks.
If you know people who might be that interested.
Oh, you're only interested if it's out of town, oh!
Well, I'll be just as interested virtually.
Okay. So with that, we will move into Council Inquiry, and we'll start with Councilman Fletcher. We don't normally start with him. We could start with him this time.
We hardly ever start out of order. I'm actually good tonight, other than to say once again, congratulations, Chief. Right person for the right job, and I think you'll do a tremendous job for our city.
Thank you, Councilman Fletcher. Councilman Raymaker?
All passed tonight.
Nice. Councilman Christie?
I was approached by a couple residents asking if the tennis courts, if there's a reason that we don't have backboards on them any longer.
On the basketball court, you mean?
No, on the actual tennis courts. We used to have backboards.
You could practice.
Where you could practice. One person can actually practice, as opposed to taking up a court, they can actually, you know, stand back there.
Play volleyball.
Yeah. And I didn't have an answer, so I figured I'd pose that this evening and see if that's something that's something we can look at.
How long ago did we take those down?
When we installed the new tennis courts, they were never included.
Yeah, they're remodeled. So it's been a while. Any thoughts on that? Any pros, cons, reasons why, other than just...
Well, it sounds like if some residents are asking for it, I can definitely look into some costs and bring that back to Council.
That'd be good. Thank you.
It probably won't even be in the range it needs to come back to Council.
Uh, you may want to get... I mean, I don't know that everybody, maybe we could take a look at it and just see if it's something everybody agrees that they want to put up on the... I'm trying to visualize it, and I'm thinking I could see pros and cons of, you know, not having one big solid wall blocking the...
You're going to say you create a hidden space.
Yeah, so maybe just do some legwork and bring it back to us to take a look at it, if that's okay.
I think that's actually probably part of the reason it was taken down.
It may be, yeah.
If your backyard was right where the backboard was, it could be kind of...
Yeah, a little music.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
Well, I think we hit it, and I think Bill's going to take a look at it to see what we can do to get MDD budget done before ours. That was really the only thing I was going to bring up, so...
Mayor Protemp?
I'm good.
Other than obviously not to minimize, a huge congratulations to Troy, Chief of Police. Thank you very much for stepping up and taking that, too. Big responsibility. For Councilman Raymaker, to make sure that I don't get in trouble again, we have a meeting scheduled. I don't know. I don't even know the exact date, but just so you know, we have a meeting... There are a couple discussions going on that I just figured I'd let you all know about. But one of them is a meeting with Commissioner Metz, and that will be to discuss the intersection. One of the things we'll discuss is the intersection that you were talking about, I-45 Research Forest. We also have been meeting with the City of Conroe, Methodist Hospital, some other stakeholders on David Memorial Hospital, on David Memorial Extension, rather. So anyway, I go through a lot of these almost, you know, and I don't probably do as good a job as I should of informing you all about them, but there are a couple different reasons why. In some cases, probably not best to talk about them in a public forum, and in a lot of cases, I, you know, don't want to create some sort of a walking quorum. So, but when I can, I'll do a better job of in council meetings, letting you all know when we're having particular meetings. But just so you know, I've been in contact with all three of our commissioners, Commissioner Noack, Commissioner Metz, Commissioner Riley, on a couple of these road projects. Talked to the President and CEO of the Methodist Hospital yesterday, Deborah Sukin, and we've been in contact with the City of Conroe pretty, you know, pretty actively. And of course, obviously, Blile Engineering is helping us with a lot of these, you know, and obviously staff. But just so you all know, the meetings haven't stopped. I'm still out there and definitely not trying to keep you all in the dark on anything, and so as we have developments, if they're noteworthy, I will certainly bring them to you. Other than that, I don't have anything else, other than to say thank you once again to our staff and our strategic partners for being here tonight, and this was a big agenda. I think there were some, on paper, looked like small items, but they're big items. And so thanks for helping us make our way through those. And as usual, I think everybody provided good input, so thank you all for that. All right, so with that, we will move into Executive Session at 8:16, where we are going to consult with our attorney pending litigation. We'll recess the regular meeting. Thanks, everybody.